Yeah.
Okay, great. I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, September 9th. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Next item for select women's updates. Obviously, I know you guys were chit chatting. School started last week. Pretty, pretty smoothly, I think. And, you know, big year because the new elementary school opening, Brown, the reconfiguring of Brown. So basically, anybody in elementary school was going to a new building in Madison and, and for pre-K as well. So, but I think things, you know, unfolded pretty well and just excited to see the buses out in the streets again, even if they're half full. So, and, you know, I think the other thing is we have, I just want to remind people, we have our nine eleven remembrance event that we hold every year. That is this Thursday at five o'clock and it's usually down by the town green, near Memorial Town Hall. It's a really nice ceremony, just to talk about all the people obviously lost during that event from Madison, as well as just generally. And also kind of reflect on the heroism of a lot of our first responders during that event. So, just continue to encourage people to attend that. And, and now the last few years, the Exchange Club has been doing this field of flags, which is another way to commemorate heroes in our lives. So I think that's just always a great event to see that. And then this weekend is our Pride Fest, which we have, I think it's our fifth now. And historically, that's been in October, and I think they've moved it forward this year. So that is going on in the green this weekend. Really no other updates. We'll get, talk about Academy a little later. I know that was with the town issuing the expression of interest, but that's on the agenda for later. Any other board member updates?
I don't have any updates, but just a quick statement. Peggy, this is just in regards to what we talked about last week. In case anybody else had, any citizens reached out to them. There was a citizen who reached out to me noticing that a private organization had made some temporary changes to a town-owned building property. This is something that Peggy was aware of, and it was an approved project. It was, you know, definitely a temporary thing, but I think it raises an important question about, you know, how do we go about becoming aware of these changes to town property? Is it something that should come before the full board? Or can it just go through an individual department? But because we have a lot of town organizations, I should say, a lot of independent organizations that use town properties, just so that we have consistency in how we approve anything and have clear guidelines for all of those, you know, town organizations. So that we're aware, that town departments are aware. I think maybe it's something that we should include in a discussion at a later date of just about how those requests are handled.
Great idea.
Hey, any other comments or?
There is, for the library, there is a ribbon cutting this morning at 10:00 AM for the old post office building. So the, the opening ribbon cutting is today, but the Chamber is doing.
Yeah, this was the building that had been damaged by the fire. We would have been having this a lot earlier, but I was gonna say, that's gotta have been two years ago now that that fire happened?
Right, yeah. It's been a while.
Yeah. I've seen them doing a ton of work back there. It looks really pretty from the outside.
Yeah, it, it's actually, I was able to go inside for a kind of celebration of one of their employees' 30th year with the library last Friday. And it looks gorgeous, the building. So it'll be a nice space for people to be able to have access to. I think they're gonna be using a lot for like meetings and things like that and programming.
Nice.
A couple of things. First, the Chamber event in August, Beach Comer, was an astonishing success.
It was well attended. There was a lot of people there.
Well attended. Everybody that I bumped into was having a good time. All of the businesses that were there were very happy with the interest and, and the attendance that they were getting. So I think we're in our second year now of closing Wall Street and having food trucks and music on the street. And I, I think that that has worked out very, very well. It's been, it's been a really good late summer celebration of, of Madison and, and we're already talking at the Chamber about how to even grow it, especially in light of next summer's anniversary. I'm not sure what the 200th anniversary gift is, but you know, I think we can even do it bigger next year. So that was great. And thanks to the Chamber, and thanks to everybody who made that work out so well, including the PD, who as always go above and beyond in helping with these community events.
Bruce, did, when they closed Wall Street, did it, does it close all the way up to Bradley and Wall?
It does. It does close all the way.
Not that far, yeah.
Yeah.
That four-way stop, so you can go, please stand.
And that's just to try and, 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 you know, mitigate the traffic.
Did you get a lot of people up Wall Street too, like knowing that it was closed? Was it as, as high traffic as downtown?
Well, the, the very end of the event was not that far up. So we're not using all of Wall Street, and we're talking about that. Is there a better way for, since it's closed, is there a better way to, to use all of that space? So, so that's good.
I heard rumors that a lot of people were heading towards Coma Mango at the end, so.
Well, that's not a bad thing.
Not a bad thing at all, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's sort of the whole point is, is to, is to make people aware of Madison businesses and, and activities that you can do. This evening, Beach and Rec will be getting its first sort of interim update on the Surf Club Master Plan. That meeting's at seven o'clock. It is, it's not a public hearing. It's, it's an update to the commission on the work performed so far, but anybody interested is of course welcome to attend. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about policy. A couple of years ago, we, as a group, the five of us, made a decision to move more towards governance by policy as a Board of Selectmen. And we, at the time, I think, talked a lot about following through and actually crafting policies. And I think we've, we've let that fall to the wayside. So I'd like to renew that conversation. And Al, I think, you know, you and I had talked about it, and I think if, if, if we needed to pick up the, the lead on, on moving that conversation forward, I'd like us to do it. I'm certainly willing to do it. And, and I bring it up, one, because I think it's a good thing for us to do. But two, over the years, I found myself a little frustrated that from time to time, I'll ask for an agenda item to be added. And I think maybe once I, I was successful in that request. But otherwise, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much been denied the opportunity to add things for discussion to the agenda and you know, in times past, and Al, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when Selectmen requested agenda items for discussing, they were, they were generally accommodated. I know, and I remember that happening during terms tenure. I'm just guessing that in, that, that he didn't start that practice, that, that Fillmore and, and prior Selectmen, first Selectmen did that. So, you know, again, it, it's a little frustrating when I see something that's important, that I believe is important and needs discussion. Not necessarily vote, but discussion. I'd, I'd like to see us have the opportunity as a board to discuss it. And I don't, I don't think that that harms anybody. I don't think a discussion about an issue harms anyone or, or is a disservice to anyone. So, Al, if you're on board, I'd love to reach out and have us pick up the, on that notion. Not, not that specific notion, but the broader topic of policies.
Let's chat online, offline, Bruce.
Okay, moving on to citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? Hands raised.
Yes, hold on one second. Go ahead, Matt.
Can, can people hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so I'm, I'm actually at Camper Coffee right now, because, you know, we're open. So Camper Coffee, we're in our third summer operating on the Madison Green, and there's currently a policy with the town that makes perfect sense, that states that itinerant vendors can operate from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, unless there's a special event or you're operating on private property. However, some towns have exceptions to coffee and tea businesses, allowing them to either open at 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM because of the nature of their business. And so I'm looking to at some point in the near future propose for an exception to be voted on to allow Camper Coffee to begin operating at 7:00 AM instead of 8:00. We do use a low decibel ultra quiet inverter generator, so you can't, you can't really hear the generator from even in front of the camper. That sound was a construction sound, not my generator. I'm actually talking next to the generator right now. But that's, that's really it. We, we would really like to, as we transition to fall and the summer crowd dwindles and people are going to work, we find that about 80 to 90% of our businesses are, is people who come into town to work, but the people who go out of town for work on the weekdays struggle to get to us early enough. And so we're just looking to open at 7:00 AM instead of 8:00. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And I know my assistant was gonna set up a time, Matt, that we could talk about that on Wednesday, so. Yeah, so it will, you know, I think it's something doable, but just have to figure out the appropriate approval process for that. Okay?
Perfect.
Any, any other hands raised? No? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, any further comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. All right, moving on to item number seven. So I've invited the River Valley Transit team. Just a reminder, this is the old Estuary or Nine-Town Transit. Now it's River Valley. They've merged with Middletown to create a much larger transit organization. And they are running the Extra Mile Pilot Program that has been grant-funded by the state of Connecticut to deliver kind of point-to-point public transportation options for our town. So inviting the director, Joe Commerford, as well as Brandon, who is the person kind of overseeing the the program, to give an update on it. It's been a huge success, I'll just say that. And we need to start thinking about our next move if funding is removed for this. So with that, I'll turn that over. You should have gotten a, a copy of the presentation yesterday afternoon. I will let Joe and Brendan give the presentation. Thank you, welcome.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you very much, Peggy. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak today to the board about Extra Mile and some of the success here. So with that, I'll go ahead and share my screen presentation. Pull it up here. All right, there we go. Did everybody see the screen okay, the presentation okay? Actually, let me, let me edit it a little bit. I think it's, I could do a little better here.
Then slideshow mode it looked like.
Yeah, I think, I think I can get it the entire way here. Okay, there we go. That's still slideshow mode?
Yep.
Okay.
Don't worry about it.
Apologies. All right, one, one, one more attempt, otherwise we'll go slideshow mode here. All right. Okay. How about that? Is that good?
Yeah.
Excellent. There we go. Third time's the charm. There you go. All right, so I appreciate it. And it will, it's a quick presentation agenda for today. So do a quick introduction about kind of who we are, what services we provide, a bit of our service, and then go over Extra Mile. You know, that's the main topic of today, the new program here in Madison and Guilford. Go over some of the details of the service, simply the initial year one plus ridership review. And then as well, talking a little bit about the future of Extra Mile Madison Guilford and kind of seeing where we plan to go with it and where are some of the questions that remain going forward. So first of all, my name is Brendan Garrett. I'm a transportation planner for River Valley Transit. And we also have on the call Joe Commerford, who is our executive director. He started an Extra Mile program in Old Saybrook back in 2019. So one of the first ones to start microtransit in the state, if not the first. So, you know, Joe is definitely sort of the, the mastermind behind this program, which is, which has definitely grown to great, great heights here. So I'm happy to talk more about it. So yeah, who, who we are, right? So we are the public transportation provider for Middlesex County. So we predominantly serve Middlesex County. We do have connections in Madison. We do have two bus routes that are currently served in Madison. Route 641 and Route 645, they go around, you know, the Main Street area there by the Stop and Shop. You might, you might see those, those buses pulling in right to that location. We transfer with the 201 bus that goes to New Haven, right? So we are definitely part of Madison when it comes to the transportation network. And we also service lots of Vista students as well on Wall Street there. So I definitely have good connections here in Madison, even though we probably serve Middlesex County. We do have connections in Madison. As I mentioned, right, we have 13 fixed route buses. And we, we actually cover a large span. I'll show a map in just a second that kind of shows our entire service span. You can kind of see how far we cover. We also have dollar ride service in addition to our traditional bus routes. We have ADA pair of transit service for those who can't use traditional forms of public transportation. And then the main focus today is our Extra Mile on-demand service, which is kind of the the microtransit service. That's kind of unique and kind of fun, I think. So here's our map, right? So here's our extension. These are our bus routes. And as you can see, on the bottom there, I see the Madison train station, Scranton Gazebo. Scranton Gazebo is a transfer point for two of our buses, as I mentioned, the 645 and 641. And also just mentioned that 641 is actually one of our most popular routes in our entire system. It even beats out most of the routes in Middletown, believe it or not. And that's again, in large part due to some really good ridership along, along the Boston Post Road and particularly with connections with Vista Life Innovations, both in Madison and in Westbrook, but also many people using it to get to work as well. So that's been great to see. And yeah, just to see our, our connection so far. So what is Extra Mile? We're talking about Extra Mile. What, what is this program? How does it work? So Extra Mile is an on-demand shuttle service. It's different than your traditional bus route with stops and schedules. It's truly on-demand. So right now, you know, if you, if you wanted to book a ride, you could. And how it works is riders request a ride through an app or a phone. We have a free app called Extra Mile by RVT. That's the preferred method for booking. And I believe right now the, the majority of riders will book through that app. And it's a great way, because when you book, I'll show screenshots of the app itself, but it operates just kind of like Uber or Lyft. But public transportation, right? So you can actually book a ride and it'll, if you can see the driver coming to pick you up and drop you off, you get estimated time of arrivals in the app. It really is like an Uber or Lyft app. It's very similar. But we know that not everybody has a smartphone or is comfortable using a smartphone, right? Particularly, we see their older populations that you know, they might not have a smartphone, might not be comfortable with one, so they can also call as well. So we have a call-in option that people will also use as well. I mean, if we encourage, if possible, to use the app, but calling's definitely okay. It's also a shared ride, so people can get picked up on one end and maybe on the way to their destination, they might pick up someone else and then they'll drop them off. So it's, it's kind of, it's smart in the sense that it'll drive in the most efficient way possible and direct the driver, direct the driver to do that. And it's available to anybody, so it's not limited to certain conditions. It's, I can use, anybody here can use the service. And I recommend you guys give it a try. But how to request a ride, right? As I mentioned, there's the app, there's also a dispatch number. And on the right there, that's actually a screenshot, sort of speak of our, of our, how the app looks when you open it, right? So it is very much like a Uber Lyft where you can type in where you want to go. Once you confirm a book of ride, you'll then actually see the bus approaching you on the map, and you'll also get an ETA. So again, that's why we really, we really think the app is the best experience. It also puts less stress on our call centers, frankly. But again, we will always take calls because we know that not everybody has a smartphone or is comfortable using one. There's also a way on the app to also attach a credit or debit card, which also can be useful for folks. If they'd rather not pay cash, they can pay with a credit and debit card attached to this app as well. So there's some benefits there using the app. So how big is the zone, right? So this is our, we, we, so as I mentioned earlier, we had the Old Saybrook zones since 2019. It's done quite well. It's grown very rapidly, which is excellent to see. And it's, yeah, even continuing to grow to this day. But when we applied for a grant to expand these zones, we applied for three, three, three locations. We applied for Madison, Guilford, East Hampton, and Middletown. We got all three, which is very exciting. And Madison and Guilford, the combined zone was definitely our, our biggest endeavor yet. And so thanks to Peggy and, and Matt Hoey from, from Guilford, and other people coming together, we were able to make a proposal work for, for a two-town zone. So it's a very, as you know, you guys have, have large towns, it's definitely a very large zone. And in this zone is where you can get picked up and dropped off. So I should mention too, with Extra Mile, you can't go anywhere you want with this service. It's actually set to certain zones. It'd be impossible for us to pick someone up at Madison and drop them off in New Haven, for example. I said that's just too far. But this is kind of the area you can go. And I should also mention that you can travel between towns. We see lots of crosstown travel. We see lots of traffic from Madison going into Guilford and lots of traffic coming in from Guilford to Madison. Yeah, I could have some, a breakdown of that a little bit further. But, so that's, that's the entirety of the zone. The fare is $1.75, one way for everyone. It's either cash, exact change, or credit and debit through the app. I think the fare is very reasonable, so she was like other Uber Lyft or taxi prices. It's definitely a good deal. And then these are our service hours. So we operate Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We operate Saturday, 7:30 to 6:00 PM as well. And there's no Sunday service currently as well on any of the Extra Mile zones. But this is our sort of initial breakdown of the service. So again, it's a very large zone and you can cross between zones, which is, which is cool. So a little bit more of the details. This is a two-year pilot program. This is state funding. What the state wanted to do is they wanted to look at across the state, there was an opportunity for funding for agencies and cities to apply for funding to run, to run these microtransit programs. This type of program is called microtransit, the on-demand public transportation. Extra Mile is just our brand of that. But what was important for them was to see different uses of microtransit across the state. So they wanted to see it in urban areas. They wanted to see it in rural areas. They wanted to see it in suburban areas. And luckily for us, we already had proof of a successful zone in Old Saybrook, so made our, made our pitches compelling. But we applied for a rural area, East Hampton. We applied for an urban area, Middletown. And we applied for a suburban area here in Madison and Guilford. And luckily, we got all three. So we can actually show them, here's what it looks like, at least in one scenario. And each of those scenarios, they want to see where's microtransit work, where does it not work for the future? So this is a two-year pilot. We've, we're now into year two of that pilot. So we've had one year of the, which I'll talk about, which is great. And it's largely, it's curb-to-curb service. So it's also, you know, excellent because you can be at, at the curb of your house or your apartment, and you can actually go from point A to point B very directly, which is awesome. And all of our vehicles are wheelchair accessible, regardless of the service, whether you're riding the fixed route bus, ADA, dollar ride, or this service, they're all wheelchair accessible, which is great. And again, also, we've also worked with both Madison and Guilford Senior Centers to actually have kind of a unique account with them, where they can actually book rides directly on our platform. And so we see, I think, last month, we had maybe 70, 80, 90 rides from Madison Senior Center, which is excellent. We love that. That's awesome. It's a really cool partnership that that can work. So if they're ever overflowed with rides on a particular day, they can send us to kind of come clean up the, the overflow. So, or if there's issues with the staffing or someone can't make it, right? So it's kind of, I think, been helpful for both Madison and Guilford as a kind of a fail-safe if there's, you know, to help people get around local trips, if you're, if the senior centers are also doing that as well.
Brendan, can I ask you a question about that before you?
Sure can, absolutely. Yep.
I'm, I'm just curious, relative to your point about the use of the app, are you finding that the seniors are booking through the app? Or is it, or is it, you know, somebody helping at the senior center to, to book for them? You know, kind of how does that work?
Sure.
Yeah, go, Joe, yep.
So the senior centers, so, so some seniors are definitely booked through the app. We know that. Most are still more comfortable phone. But the, what we don't, the senior centers is they have the same, they have similar access to what we have, where they can go right into our software and they can book for the individuals, just as we can. So, yeah, so they, I mean, they have a little limited, you know, a little more limited access than we have, but but they're able to do all the booking. Trip, they can cancel trips. They can see where the bus is for the person. So even if the person called that, you know, if they gave the trip to us because they couldn't do it, they can go and see, okay, well, how far is the bus? And even if you don't have the app, you will get text messages updating you saying that the bus is, if you book, so you can book in advance too, and kind of mention that here. And that's what the senior center usually does. They're booking in advance. And they'll get a text the night before reminding them they have the trip tomorrow. They'll get a trip, a text about an hour before, giving them a 15-minute window, the bus will be arriving in. And then they get a book, a text saying that the bus is on the way, and they get a text when the bus arrives. So, you know, it's, it is still better with the app because you get even more information. But even if you don't have the app, as long as you have the ability to receive text messages, you still do get a lot of updates, much more than, than a lot of other services do. But yeah, so, and, and the Madison Senior Center is even using us for a lot of their local trips so that they can focus on the things that are outside of our service area to, because there's never enough dollars out there for transportation. We know it just grows and grows. It's, is significant. And so this allows them to focus on trips leaving the area and, you know, and use their limited resources on that. And, and we're providing a lot of, most if not all, the in-town or Madison Guilford trips for them. So it's a great way to kind of, you know, team up and, and provide more service to residents.
Love it.
That's a great point, Joe, that it's, it's great for local trips where the senior center can focus more on the larger, you know, regional trips that wouldn't be, you know, served with that, with this, with this program. That's, that's a great point. Absolutely. All right, so, let's see here, next slide. So a little bit more, but we're going to delve a little bit into the data for year one. So this particular year one snapshot is looking at May 28th, which is when we started initially. So we started May 28th of 2024, we've, you know, since past year. So looking in at a year ridership, you can see that total year one was over 13,000 rides, which is excellent. You can see as well that it's been a pretty steady growth. You can see month over month, and I'll even show it's continued to grow even further. So I'll show that a little bit, but just for, for year one. You know, it's definitely, it grew pretty rapidly initially and then has continued to grow throughout the months now where, you know, I'll give a spoiler alert, we're now hitting over 2,000 a month as well, which is excellent. So it continues to grow. There, at this point, we're averaging between 90 and 110 rides per day, which is excellent. For context, right, so what, what does that mean? That could be good, that could be bad. In our Old Saybrook zone, it's been around for, you know, five plus years. It's, you know, has a healthy rider base now. A lot of people know it and use it. It's a smaller zone, less people in the catchment zone, kind of, if that makes sense. But it does similar numbers to this already. In fact, it's actually currently exceeding it. So Madison and Guilford, the zone is exceeding. Now, we expect it to exceed because it is a bigger zone with more people in it. But it is also performing better now than our, our, our zone we've had for over five years, which is a good sign. It's definitely growing very fast, which is excellent. And then a little more information here about the actual, I think these are, these are kind of cool, right? So our software provides us some interesting kind of data, what, what the heck is this, right? So this is a, this is our, a display of, of pickup destinations. These are the destinations people are getting picked up from. And you can see also the little, the faint lines. Those are where they're going. So you can see the kind of the travel patterns. Again, this is very broad, but you can see that there are some, the, the bigger, the, the bigger the, the circle, the more rides we're getting from that area. So you can kind of see there's definitely some, some hotspots in the area. Which I'll, I'll cover Madison's hotspots in a little more detail, but you can kind of get a, you know, a brief visual of how there is lots of cross-travel between the two zones. Again, this is the same thing, just, but just with destinations. So you can see, again, very similar patterns, but these graphics are kind of cool. So what are some of the high-ration locations in Madison we're seeing? So, you know, definitely the Madison Stop and Shop and Scranton Gazebo. And that's great because not only is there a Stop and Shop, you have obvious grocery trips, grocery trips, medical trips, and employment trips are very common public transportation trips, but also the Scranton Gazebo, which is our bus transfer point, which is great to see, because we are seeing people who are taking extra mile to go to the train station to continue on towards further destinations, or our gazebo, where they can transport longer regional bus routes to New Haven or towards Old Saybrook, or even towards Middletown, right? So it's pretty cool. This service is great for local trips. But it can also be used as a tool to get to longer regional trip transfer points, which I think is excellent. The library's also been very popular, the downtown Madison, of course, and CVS, Concord Metals, which I know is, was excellent to see as an affordable housing opportunity. The people are actually, are using that. We're seeing that happen. The high school as well. I actually mentioned the high school is kind of cool to see, because we'll see a lot of students watch the McDonald's and then go from the, you know, after, after they have the McDonald's, they'll hop on the Extra Mile and go. And it's funny, me and Joe always laugh at that, because in Old Saybrook, there's also a McDonald's near the high school, and they also pick it up. So it's just funny to see that there's a kid And it's funny, me and Joe always laugh at that because in Old Sabre, there's also a McDonald's near the high school, and they also pick it up. So it's just funny to see that there's a connection between the two that students like going to McDonald's and then take an extra mile, which is cool. We've all seen the beach and Vista. And then, you know, some places like Lenny and Joe's and Jasper Lane are some of our, our bigger locations. Again, as you said in the map, it's everywhere. It's spread. These are kind of some of the hotspots we're seeing. People go take a lot of trips to and from.
You guys go into Hamo also, Brendan?
Yeah, we do. Not only do we go into Hamo, we actually for the summer have it free. So if, we used to have this program called Park Connect. We had like a Madison shuttle that would go into Hammond asset beaches. It was all about connecting people to the beach, right? Especially in the summer. And kind of a continuation of this is the Hammond asset beach connection here. So it's actually free. So if you book a ride, it's smart enough, we can set it so that if someone's, let's say, booking in Madison, you know, in the, in the north part of Madison, they want to go to, you know, the beach, it'll actually give them a free trip. It'll just book for free and they can go and then come back as well. So if it starts your ends in Hammond asset, it's kind of like a way to get people carried to the parks. That was pretty cool to see. And I will say, people use it. I think we had like seventy or so people use it last month, which is great. So people are actually using that and taking advantage of it and going to the beach. So that's very cool. And also, we like to see it too, if people can, who we be booking at, maybe they're coming from out of, out of town, staying at the campsite, they can actually get around town too, which is great. So they can actually go to restaurants, go to shops and that kind of thing. I think actually there's even more opportunity in future years to promote that further, I think, actually to, to even increase that ridership from the people out of town who could, you know, get to business, which is obviously a good thing. So I think that's definitely, definitely encouraging. That's a great question. Yeah, we, we do, we do pull into Hammond asset. Again, maybe I'm nerding now, but I like the stuff too. This is looking at location of trip, origin and destination, right? So I'll kind of walk through this quickly. So of all the trips, for this is, this is just year one, I think it's actually changed. There are thirty-one percent of the trips, about one third of the trips both started and ended in Madison. So there's definitely some good ridership there. And then fifteen percent started in Madison and ended in Guilford. So you've got about fifteen percent of folks starting in Madison and going to Guilford. And then you have about the same amount, a little less, starting in Guilford, going to Madison. So you are, again, the, the point there is that there is great cross-travel between the two trips and then about forty percent just in Guilford. So it's actually not as, it's pretty close, actually. In fact, the, you know, such for one year data, I think it's even closing the gap because of all the senior center trips now from Madison, but just to show that.
Was that data pre-target or post-target?
Oh, good, great question. That's a great question.
I think that number's going up. That fifteen percent will be jacked, I think.
I, I think it could be. I, I hope so. And that'd be great to see all the, the targets and all that, yeah. But any, any new big businesses is a good idea for, we'll see some, see some ridership there. Especially a target, that'll definitely help. But yeah, I like to just show this, just to show that there is cross-travel and it's actually fairly even between the two towns, which is great. They're never going to be exact, but it's actually pretty even. Yep. So I talked about, so again, the point being that, you know, you know, over half the trips are at least one leg in Madison, which is good. And you can see there, it's more data there. So estimated year two ridership, so again, we don't, we don't have no crystal ball. But in a no-growth scenario, so what, what this, what this ridership estimation is, the twenty thousand comes from, took, took the last three years. So excuse me, rephrase that. The last three months of year one of, of monthly ridership data. Average that out and say, okay, if we did that average twelve times this year, if we just took that no-growth scenario, you know, extrapolate it out for two years, it'd be about twenty thousand. I think these numbers are conservative, especially the recent growth we've seen. So again, this is a very conservative, we had thirteen thousand year one in a no-growth scenario, it'd be about twenty. I, I think it'll be more than that. I, you know, I won't speculate, but I'll just show you what we did last couple year two data so far. So looking at June, July and August, you know, we went from seventeen to twenty-one eighty-six, twenty-five eighteen and twenty-four eighty-one. So we're had very strong ridership last couple of months. And probably part of that is probably, I think, the summer, right? Got students out, going, we see students going to Starbucks all the time. We see lots of, lots of trips like that. And they're also starting to group up, which is great. So another thing is, this isn't just a, a one-person ride. You can book, and we actually really encourage the book in groups. So we'll see groups of five people, six people, three people go into these places. That's excellent. That's more efficient. It's better for everybody. So that's, so just the, the, the longer the shorter story is, it's been growing even under year two. It's actually been growing pretty rapidly the last couple of months. You know, I think it's possible we see a bit of a cooling in the winter, but still, it's still, still doing very strong. And I think it'll, if this continues, it'll well exceed our, our twenty thousand estimation, which is excellent. So again, we're averaging a hundred plus riders today. Our, we had our best day a couple of weeks ago, which was a hundred and thirty-four riders in one day, which is again, really strong. So people definitely use it, the longest, where people, people are using it, which is great. And so this kind of brings us to the future, right? So what's the plan?
Hours of operation, Brendan?
Yeah, so the hours of operation, I'll bring them over here. They are, six AM to seven PM on Monday to Friday. And then Saturday, seven thirty AM to six.
The reason why I ask is just the, the sort of the dovetail with a, a safe rides program as an example.
Okay.
I don't know if you can even like speculate, but are people using it as sort of an opportunity for safe rides as well, as well?
Like at night and that kind of thing?
Yeah, well, it's at seven.
It's hard to say. I, I think, I think especially during the summer when, when it's pretty light out, it's hard, hard to know. They could, we, we, we just, I, I wouldn't have a good answer on that.
Big ridership after beach comers, right, Bruce?
Yeah, there you go. There you go. Hey, that's, people will use it and that's okay. Hey, getting people safely where they need to go, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. So I actually even said, this is actually old year two, June was our best month. It was July was actually our best month with twenty-five, which is great. But anyway, so the, the strong year one ridership has been, has been really exciting us. And, and the only, the only kind of downer on this is that this is a two-year pilot, right? And so we're in year two. And so the question becomes, at the end of May of this year, what's the future? Unfortunately, we don't know either. So we, we'd love for this program to continue. I think the ridership is there. There is, so I'll mention to you, there is, they've mentioned, the state being they have mentioned a potential for additional optional funding years. So if there's funding, they're definitely willing and their, you know, programs are doing well. They're willing to potentially fund these programs. In fact, currently they're actually, you know, concentrating Yukon and do this big study about how to like measure the different, because again, there's, I think, nine, ten, eleven different micro program programs across the states. We're not the only one now because of this big expansion. So all these pilots are out there and doing their data and doing all this, right? I think though, anecdotally, from talking, looking to other groups and just the data itself, I think Madison is doing quite well. I think it's one of, one of the, one of the better, if not one of the top couple programs, which is excellent. So I think, what I would say is, if there is funding, I think Madison Guilford would be very competitive, continue programming. It's, it's shown consistent growth and already really good numbers. But the problem is, we don't know if there is that funding secured. So we're, we're going to do some digging in the coming months to see if we can get an idea of what they're planning. Because we, we need to know also for our drivers and like, what's the, are we going to continue next year? So it's definitely something that we're, we're monitoring and hopeful that will continue. I think if there is money out there, it will be very competitive, Madison Guilford is what I would say. So it's kind of good news, bad news. Again, you guys are doing great ridership here. It's more just, is there money to continue this going forward? And we hope that there is. I, I'll also just briefly read off the expense because it's not, it's not a, a cheap service, right? Because this is four or five vehicles at one time to service this area. It's a big area, right? So the bigger your, your zone is, the more vehicles you need to effectively serve it. You could put one vehicle in there, but the wait time would be two and a half hours. So it's not going to be an efficient service. So having those four or five vehicles can mean they can be in different parts of the, of the towns to make sure they're getting good coverage and, you know, the, the wait times won't be brutal. And so it'll be an effective service. And so far it has been. The wait times are, are very reasonable, like between ten, fifteen minutes for most trips. And sometimes they're faster on slower times. So definitely a good wait time. By the way, so the operating expense is about, you know, it's, it's a little north of a million dollars for, for a year. So it's not, it's not a cheap service. I think in, in year two, year one was, we quoted them for a million seventy thousand and then a million one hundred and twenty-four thousand for year two. So this current year, because obviously things go up unfortunately, but so that, so that's just to say that it's not, it's an expensive, potentially expensive service. But luckily we are seeing good return investment in terms of ridership and it's been a successful program. So it's been successful, but it is a, you know, it's, it's not a cheap service. There's a lot of vehicles to make it work. But it is so far, I think, you know, an encouraging program and it is you know, reasonably effective use of funding right now. And it'll only continue to get more effective as the, as the ridership continues to increase. But yeah, so that's kind of where we're at.
So the ridership and the revenue offset that operating cost? I mean, how does that sort of?
The revenue is, is pretty minimal. The, I, I, the exact numbers in front of me, but the revenue is something like five percent of the, you know, five, six percent. It's not like the dollar seventy-five is, is super cheap, right? So it's something, it's, it's not nothing. You don't, you don't make it free, don't throw it away, but it's not, it doesn't cover the majority of the cost. But I can actually, I can send, I can send our revenue as a follow-up to see if I can, I can follow with that, know that number for the year.
Brendan, just some quick math, if I understand it correctly, your ridership would need to be five hundred and seventy-one thousand rides to cover your operating expenses?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be, it will never, will never cover operational expenses. Thing is that public transportation across the board is heavily subsidized. You're looking at ninety, ninety-five percent subsidy across anything. So it's more of a public service than it is a, we're not trying to make money or even break even. This is a, a public service.
But, 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 but in the, in the, in the sense of, of sustainability, what level of ridership or at what fair with the current ridership, would you need to approach the current level of subsidies for other bus transportation expenses?
Yeah, it's a good question. So, so micro transit is inherently more expensive because of the the on-demand nature and the amount of vehicles needed to serve it, right? So, but it's very context dependent. Me and Joe were just talking about this actually just, just the other day, that for example, it's different. So you look at like a fixed bus route, right? So a traditional bus route, you think of bus stops. The two oh one, you have, for example, it goes from New Haven to Madison. Right? That's a traditional bus route with bus stops where it comes in. That, that you can look more easily at the cost because it's, you know, one bus coming, coming back and forth and you can see the ridership and you can kind of estimate how much you're collecting in the fair revenue versus how much it costs to operate that service. And so typically, those services, such as buses are more efficient. However, the problem becomes when serving a service area like Madison and Guilford, where yes, you do have density along the Boston Post Road corridor, but as soon as you go north, it starts to really, you know, get more suburban and rural. You can't effectively, if, if, let's forget, if you put up a bus route up seventy-nine, that would not be successful. I don't believe it. It would get very little ridership and it would, it wouldn't be successful. But this program has shown it has been successful for ridership. So it's one of those things where it's less of a it, my opinion is more expensive than, than traditional fixed route buses. However, a fixed route bus, we don't believe would be effective in Madison up, going up north. It is effective on the shoreline, right? So CT Transit has a bus route. We serve on the Boston Post Road area because it makes sense. There's businesses, there's shops, there's some density there. But once you go north, there really isn't justification to put a fixed route bus up there. But there are still, are some people who need it and we're seeing route, people come from the central and northern parts of both Madison and Guilford down south towards the Boston Post Road. But it's a, it's a great question because it is, you know, it is an expensive service, but it is actually for you guys, an effective service when it comes to serving those areas that wouldn't normally be served because it wouldn't make sense to go up there.
I think you have to more compared to other on-demand response services. And if you look at that, the cost, or you look at where we expect ridership to be this year, your, your cost per trip is lower than even like a Hartford downtown Hartford paratransit service. So, you know, it's not going to be fixed route. It's not going to be dense fixed route numbers because it's not dense. You know, we, we could make it more efficient and use less vehicles if we limited the area to just your most populated portions of towns. But as you saw on that map, a lot of trips are originating from your much more rural parts, which means there's a lot of need in those rural parts that was not being met. And as Brendan said, trying to serve those, and really that's how we landed on micro transit.
Yep.
Because Peggy's been talking to us for a long time about how do we serve the, the northern parts of town that are disconnected from, you know, most of the services and commercial parts of town? How do you get those people into town? And I mean, you guys know your town even better than us. There's no one corridor you can run a bus route down that would cover these areas. And that, and that map really shows that, that they're all over the place. And so this is a really effective way to do that. Is it more expensive than a route? Absolutely. But would you be posting the numbers we're seeing, even if you ran this much, you know, four or five buses on a fixed route? I would be very surprised if you did. So it really depends on what, and that's why the state wanted to do different models of micro transit to see where it works best. You know, like there's some that are happening in more urban areas, you know, and that's really where fixed route works best. When you have dense urban areas, a fixed route makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
You got a lot of people, you have, you can, you have major corridors that you can pick up a lot of people and you have a lot of both where people live and their destinations on one route. That's a lot harder as you get to a town like Madison and Guilford that, again, if you looked south of ninety-five, yeah, you could do that. Once you go north of ninety-five, it's a very different, it's very different. It's not so easy to do. And so it becomes more challenging to use traditional fixed routes to serve those types of areas.
Let me, let me ask my, my question a little bit differently because that, that, that isn't what I was asking. I appreciate the, that, the information you've given. If we put a number on, say, what the Connecticut Transit subsidies are, you know, for that, for that two oh one route or, or a typical subsidy and, and say it's a fifty percent subsidy, right? So the revenue only covers half of, of the expense, the, there, there needs to be other funds. At what point, where, where are we in that thing? Are we at, you know, ninety-five percent subsidy? And do we have a path to, you know, having the revenues be more? I, I, I guess my concern is this isn't going to be sustainable and, and even, you know, even, well, I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't know how long you pay for virtually a hundred percent of this service in the long term out of you know, Connecticut grants or even in federal grants. It would seem to be very tenuous. And then I have a companion question, which is you are creating a lot of data about where people are going, right? You've got some big nodes that you're discovering. And would those nodes ever rise to the level of maybe having a short route between Guilford and Madison with a couple of stops, something that runs with more frequency than the two oh one bus?
So I'll start with the subsidy. There's no bus system in the country that's fifty percent funded by fairs. So yes, we're at like five, which is low, but I'm trying to pull up CT Transit's numbers right here. But everyone, every bus system is pretty heavily subsidized. To get to numbers like that, I mean, Metro North, when pre-COVID, wasn't like seventy percent fair you know, revenue, which was, is one of the best in the country. But bus systems are nowhere near that. And I'm just trying to look at their numbers here. So all bus systems are pretty heavily subsidized, even, even in New York City. CT Transit, just looking costs about, in twenty twenty-three was costing about eight dollars per trip. Fair is a dollar seventy-five, so about twenty percent fare revenue.
It'd even be less because you had like reduced fares as well. So the dollar seventy-five, so that should be.
That's true. So, yeah, so that's right. They're even lower. The average fare is probably closer to a dollar. So you're still talking about, again, at, at a two oh ones would be less because it's more suburban. You know, that, that's an average. That includes all the downtown, New Haven, you know, dense parts. So that's around like two oh one, my guess would be, it might be in the twelve to fifteen percent range in terms of fare box. Fare box collection. So, yeah, but when you look at roadways are a hundred percent subsidized, right? We don't have tolls in Connecticut. So your trip by car is heavily subsidized as well.
And, 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 I'm not, don't misunderstand. I'm not trying to say this isn't a good or a good thing. I'm saying, how does it endure? And, and to me, it has to look like other public transportation services. And so what is the path to getting to look like other public transportation?
You're right, but it also has to look like public transportation in areas that are like yours, right? So we, we don't want to compare to downtown New Haven because you're not downtown New Haven and your, your transportation needs are different. And, and are more costly. That's the nature of suburbs. You know, it's going to be more costly to provide service in the suburb. That, that's absolutely just the way it is. You don't have a single dense core to take everybody to. You don't have, you know, dense residential neighborhoods to come from. You know, so it is tougher to serve and it's, and it's more expensive. And, you know, by the way, it's trying, we do have capacity still to grow. So that's one thing is we could try and get more trips per hour by continuing to grow the numbers of people using it. So, you know, that could be, that could be done and reduce the cost per person, per passenger trip. We could look at raising fares. Fair, the fare is very low. You know, so that is an option. Are you going to get it high enough to cover the question? No. But could you have more fare box recovery? Yes, you could by doing that. But, yeah, it's.
I am just thinking, this is a broader conversation. I think today was an update on the success of the program. I think Bruce's questions are spot on though, because we have to look to the future, right? After twenty twenty-six. I think it would be helpful. I think it would be helpful maybe to have a follow-on conversation. Once we have a better handle on, um, what the state's approach is going to be, I'd love to have our Hartford delegation see this presentation. You know, and maybe I'll coordinate something like that and then understand a little bit more about what the funding sources are going to be. Obviously, there's a huge constraint now on any kind of federal funding. So, um, this is a tough time to have these conversations because, once again, this is a public service. It's highly subsidized. We knew that going into this, but we were trying to figure out, how do we offer options for people that don't have an easy way to get to a fixed bus route? We, I was advocating for a Route seventy-nine bus, but when you start looking at, how does the person get from their house that's three miles away from Route seventy-nine? They're not going to take the bus, right? They're still going to need some sort of transportation to get to the bus line. So this was, you know, what came out of this is we're really ripe for this type of service. It's just, it is cost, it's costly. So, um, I think all great questions and maybe we do some more homework on the funding side, come back with a little more of the operational costs on what it takes to sustain this. And, um, you know, hopefully get some more information because I think it's all relevant conversation. This ends right now as a hard stop. May twenty twenty-six, right? That we run out of money for that last round?
Of the current funding, the current agreement though allows for optional extensions.
Okay.
Yes, under the.
Are those funded?
As far as we know, not yet, but there's two year options. And I'll just, one more thing, that a service like this, they are more expensive at the beginning per passenger trip. Because you got, you have to have this, the service there for people to start using it and rely on it. And, and yet they don't really know about it yet. So, you know, at the beginning, it's always more expensive per person as you wait for it to build up because the, the capacity has to be there first for them to be able to book. Because once they have a bad experience, because you didn't have enough buses out there, then they're not likely to use it again. So hopefully as it gets more mature, you know, we will see the trip per person drop. And it's a, you know, again, is it ever very, is it always going to be expensive? Yes, but hopefully it's at least per passenger trip, it becomes more.
And maybe one of the things we do, um, is have tried to tap into, and I don't know if there's a way to like put a survey on the app when people use it. Like, why are you taking this? Is it cost? Is it convenience? Is it, you, you don't have a driver's license? You know, I don't have a car, you know, something like that. I don't know if you've done. Yeah, so it might be also helpful to understand what's driving a lot of these pickups. I mean, I'm a teen parent, so, and I know the high school really embraced this and they did a, a tiger talk and, and, um, and that really helped spur a lot of, uh, high schoolers using this. And I know it was used a lot, you know, going to the beach and all that stuff during the summer. So, um, you know, that's a different need, right? Than, you know, somebody who is literally doesn't, can't afford a car and lives up in North Madison and they struggle with trying to go grocery shopping, right? Very different needs. Sorry, Al, go ahead.
Peggy, um, I think the next conversation needs to include, uh, whether or not, uh, Guilford and Madison need to be at the table together for any future model to work. Is it just, is it, is, is this just solely a Madison conversation? Or are we really dependent on having Guilford at the table as well? I don't need that answer today, but.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And, and that is what part of this is too, obviously, is, and, and we've got that cross-town. You know, that's almost thirty percent of the users are going between the two towns. So one would view that's a positive driver of usage of the service. But definitely, Al, and I, and we've had updates from, usually Matt and I attend together. The Board of Selectmen and Guilford got this presentation like two weeks ago, right? I think you guys went to their meeting. Uh, so they've had this update.
No, we are, we're scheduled for one coming.
Oh, you're scheduled. Okay. So Matt and I talked about, we need to give our boards an update.
Got canceled. That's what happened.
Okay, okay. Um, so, but you're spot on. It does have to be part of that conversation as well, too. All right. Well, well, thank you for coming. A lot of good conversation. I think a lot of, uh, more follow-up, obviously, and it's great to see the success. You guys do a fantastic job with this. I mean, it's so easy to use and, you know, um, it's the, it's the new, it's, you know, the, it's, it's innovation. It's the best, right, for public transportation? So, um, so thank you for that and I'll, I'll follow up with you and we'll figure out like next steps and timing and stuff like that.
Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. Thanks very much.
So our next agenda item is the wastewater facilities plan. And, um, I know that, um, Tom Hanson, who's the chair of the WPCA is here, um, as well as Trent. So we're due to kind of finalize this thing, right? But it turned out there was just, we'd gotten comments back from the state. There was some more work that was required to get this document finalized. Because our board hasn't really formally seen the final product yet. We've had like a draft presentation. And then we need to like somehow adopt it or reckon, you know, uh, um, accept the report. And then we have to figure out what our implementation plan is going to be based on the report and how we want to do that. But in the meantime, we got to get to the final report. So Trent, if you just want to talk about kind of, there was a, a, a need for additional funding for the completion. It's been a little bit more labor intensive, I think, than was anticipated initially. So go ahead, Trent.
Yeah. So, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, Weston and Sampson, they have completed in the original agreement. They've completed, you know, task two point one to two point seven, which is, which is really like a good scope of, of the work. We are at the final stage of the report. You know, they have considered the alternate, their alternative development. Um, we've had public engagement since our last Board of Selectment update. And there are some DEP comments that we received already. It's about five to six comments. And, uh, they are, they submitted an amendment to ask for more funds, I think originally the time it took. Granted, WPCA, myself, we did have a lot of comments back to them. They were pretty extensive. I didn't think they expected to address the round of comments from us internally. And, and I think that may have, you know, added to, you know, why they've, you know, taken the time they did to complete it. But we're at the final stage now and, um, they're asking for, I think it's fourteen thousand eight hundred for this first phase. And then the next phase, as we discussed, Peggy, would be more related to the implementation of that recommended, uh, with final recommendation to the board.
So this will get us to our final acceptance of the report, uh, which we hope to do in end of October, I think it's scheduled. Um, and then, um, or November. And then we would then, as a board, determine how we're going to do the implementation phase. And that might involve hiring them as a consultant. There's going to be work by the Health Department. And it really depends on what, you know, how we want to set up the ordinance. So there's going to be that process that we have to go through. So that's, that'll have a separate budget that we'll come back on. So this four, up to fourteen thousand eight hundred is really to, you know, get us through the Board of Selectmen meeting with a final draft or final report. So any, any questions for Tom or Trent on that? And you had some materials in your, uh, packet on that as well? Okay, um, so we will, um, item number nine, then I'll just say we could vote on this. Item number nine, discuss and take action to approve leasing funds from the planning reserve of up to fourteen thousand eight hundred to fund completion of the WPCA wastewater facilities plan pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved?
Okay, Scott's seconding. Any further comments or questions? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So, um, so you guys now can get that, we'll just get that done. And then this will be coming, I think we targeted November now, right, for a presentation to the Board of Selectmen? I can't remember what we.
We targeted, uh, I think it's October twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So they, they, they will, they will respond to the round of DEP comments and finalize and submit and, uh, and get ready for you guys.
Okay, good. Okay. And that'll get us to that. Um, thank you for that and then move on to the next phase in that. So I know it's been a long process and, but hey, it only took you twenty-five years, Tom, right, to get to this point? So, so what's another couple of weeks? Sorry, you're muted. Um, but I think we're good. So we will, uh, this goes to Board of Finance and then, um, you know, we'll get it done and we'll see you guys again, obviously, for a bigger conversation, uh, uh, this fall. So thank you for that. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Yep.
Great. Thanks a lot.
Okay, uh, moving on to item number ten. Is discuss and take action to approve amending chapter fifteen, article, uh, four of the Town of Madison Code of Ordinances to incorporate the old Elm Street Local Historic District.
So moved?
Second.
So this is basically the actual ordinance that went to public hearing, a following on the vote, that the town made to join the, um, and that passed, you know? So the historic district is now, it can be proceed and be created. And this is, um, amending our ordinances to allow for it. And we had the public hearing, uh, and, you know, Al was there in person, I was online. And it was pretty much the, mostly the members of the Historic District Commission, if I recall, Al, right? Or Jen, you were there as well. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and I know we were a little, I was a little fuzzy on the process. I forgot that we have to take this final step. Because I remember we voted, we had to vote on joining and then allowing me to vote, yes, and all this other stuff. But here we are. Any additional questions on this? No? Okay, great. So all in favor of approving item number ten, say aye. Aye, great. All right, ten passes. All right, item number eleven, um, update on the Academy Due Diligence Item Request for Expression of Interest. No, I know, uh, Bruce had made a request to me about putting a separate action item or a, a additional action item to discuss a calling a town meeting to demolish the building. I did respond to Bruce in writing and said, the purpose of this conversation is to talk about all that. We've had kind of a list of due diligence items, um, since May about the process for this. And, um, and I thought it was a little premature to actually go into detail about calling a town meeting when we're really in the process of information gathering. We have the RFP out and then we're putting together some estimates for what the cost of demolition would be because we can't evaluate them in silos, right? We need, kind of need to look at the whole picture. So that, that was kind of some of the background of, uh, the previous comments. And so in your packet is just a follow-up on the deed research. And basically Carrie had come back and said, they don't see any issues, no problems with it. We're not selling the property anyways, but there's no conditions or anything that would prevent us from doing anything with the property. I've had people coming out to me saying, you can't do anything anyways. You can't put apartments there, you can't do this because of the deed restrictions. And so we just kind of checked the box and had a full, a thorough review by council. The, um, uh, in terms of the demolition, when we talked about this in June, we're, you know, we had hired professionals to estimate the demolition cost for Ryerson. And that was like a fifty thousand dollar, forty thousand dollar process. They had to do, um, hazardous materials assessment. They, that building committee is coming back to us in, in the end of September. They're going to update us on the budget. And they're also going to have, uh, a professional estimate for what the Ryerson demolition is going to cost. The plan was to take their extrapolate from their numbers that we paid for and apply them to Academy. Um, so we could come up with a much more refined estimate. Because right now Ben is using kind of best practice ranges, you know, from what the building of the size and the age would be for the cost. And that's kind of the numbers we talked about in public. I was always using this three to five million dollar bracket. I think Ben has been saying four million, kind of in the middle of that. So that's kind of the range that we're talking about. So I asked Ben, I said, how do we refine that more? Do we wait for the Ryerson numbers? Is there, should we hire a professional estimator? What would that cost? So he's here to talk about that and the timeline that would be and the cost would be if we want to get a really defined. But we all know cost estimators can be wrong. Because once you go out to, the only way to get a real number is just to put it out for bid. You know, that we're going to take the building down, we've authorized this and we have the funding in place to cover it. And then we would get bids in. So this is the step before that, if we were to hire a professional estimator. We went through this exercise already with this building, if you recall, and found our professional estimators were not very accurate, uh, in terms of their estimates. But having said that, Ben, if you want to just talk about, um, your recent conversations with Gilbane and, and coming up with the cost of that and what that would entail and timeline, that would be great.
Sure. So I, I engaged Gilbane on this, uh, this came, our Peggy and I had this conversation on Thursday. So in light of time, uh, kind of went to the big boy who's in town right now, working with us, um, to, to get what would be a cost from them to put together an estimate. Uh, so I broached that subject with them on Thursday. We had a discussion again yesterday. In the meantime, um, Gilbane was digging up kind of the, the scattering of source material that's online and everywhere else regarding this project. We did dig up, uh, hazardous building survey from twenty fifteen, that actually outlined all the, the HBM's in the building and potential abatement cost from back then. Uh, I thought it was kind of ironic, the, uh, Fussin' O'Neill, who did that report back in twenty fifteen, actually never finalized the report. The report was in draft format. And the final note in their file was, it was done at the request of the Public Works Director at the time. It wasn't, they, that they were to hold until the, uh, town solidified what was going to happen with the site before going to a final version. So here we are, ten years later, we still haven't done that. But that, those numbers being that old, um, that's so old now in construction years, especially what's happened between now and then. It almost renders that survey irrelevant. Um, it's not something we could just scale a couple of years out on, but it is good source material. It does have all the testing that was done. Uh, so we don't have to do a lot of that rework. So it's not a fifty thousand dollar process. However, the quote that Gilbane gave us is thirteen thousand four fifty-five. I just got that late last night. Uh, and what that would be is basically they'll do a, a plan review to go back through the, the bid plans and specs. They could pull a lot of the information out of there, uh, supplement that with the Fussin' O'Neill report that was done in twenty fifteen. Um, and then on top of that, the most recent Fuss in a report where we did the destructive testing, um, last summer. I believe it was, and the report was last fall, right before it went out to bid. So they could use that in their compilation because the abatement portion is a big part of, of building demolition. And, uh, then they'll, they'll be able to, to work up a price, um, for, for demolition for the building. So again, it's like the, the numbers we've been kicking around, like Peggy said, we're three to five. You know, I, I'm kind of in that four range. My plan was, hey, let's, let's wait till Ryerson's number comes back and scale it up. Uh, that's free. We don't have to spend the thirteen grand. But if we do want to get another, you know, another level of accuracy to, to kind of bolster what that estimate is going to be, the cost to do that is thirteen five. Um, I haven't got in touch with Gilbane this morning. I've been running around since six fifteen here this morning. But, um, I just want to confirm with them that they'd be able to get this done within thirty days of, of a notice to proceed. I think that's a reasonable schedule. Um, I do want to confirm that with them though, but that's where we are.
Can I ask, uh, uh, maybe a, a rather stupid question, but why don't we just send this out to RFP? Why?
Going to ask the exact same thing. If an RFP doesn't cost us any money.
We have to stop doing that as an organization. Um, the, the marketplace gets wise to that pretty quickly. The, in, in, the, the way that, that things line up, especially in the municipal sector, your funding has to be in place before you go out and, and actually bid stuff. We've done too many bid cancellations in the past, especially like on, on Academy. Now, those were due to getting bad numbers from what it seems from your estimators in, in that process. But again, think of, think of this as like your capital planning process when you do your five-year SIP. In year five of a SIP, it's, it's somebody like myself or Peter putting in a number into our capital plan. We call that an internal estimate that's based on past project knowledge. If it's a project we haven't done before, you could reach out to colleagues, other resources and get a number that you put in there. As that project marches forward in your capital plan, year four, you refine it, year three, you refine it. When you get into two, if it's a big enough project, that's where you start bringing in third parties to either do some conceptual design, and, and maybe tie in some cost estimating to that. But you don't want to use the marketplace as your test to see if you could afford something because you will very quickly stop getting bidders. There is, there's a significant cost that goes into bidding a project, especially one like Academy. Now, demo is smaller, but still, um, only so many times are companies going to devote resources to bidding these projects to see you cancel them. In my, in my career of doing this before coming to Madison, um, I only had to cancel one time. Um, and that was because it was in twenty twenty-one where costs were just, you know, they were going through the roof. You, you, when, by the time you're going out to bid, you should be putting in good budget numbers. Your, your, your internal team sometimes bolstering it with external estimates. The other thing is, um, when you create a budget, don't always go on your, like, hey, we, so for example, take a roof project. Say we did a roof project last summer and it was five hundred thousand dollars. And say we're doing the identical project next summer. Don't put in five hundred thousand dollars. You know, put in five fifty. Maybe you got good bids, maybe you, it was a fluke, the market was hungry, whatever. There's a litany of reasons why that price could be higher or lower. But the last thing you want to do is be short on funding. So what that requires is a level of trust. So what that requires is a level of trust, that if the project does come in low, we're gonna give the money right back. Um, I am definitely not one of those people that goes around and tries to find ways to like squeak in, oh, it's a roof project, we're gonna do a sewer, and try to, you know, squeak that into the roof project. No, give the money back, set up a new project. Um, when you work with that honest approach, you don't have to, 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 to keep running shoestring budgets. Final thing while I'm on the soapbox, is, when an estimate comes in for something for six hundred thousand dollars, and you think maybe there's a, a way to get it for five fifty, for example, we're looking at a building at the Police Department right now, uh, we wanna do a drainage system, if we don't do the drainage system, we could probably save forty thousand dollars. Keep it in the project for now, we can always take it out later. The reverse is very hard to do, both from a public standpoint, you know, all your approvals and everything like that. If you shoot your budget before you even get the project down into a design, y- you're not saving anything, you're not helping anything. Um, so don't negotiate in the budget phase, approve the budget, negotiate when you're actually building the thing, there's always time to do that later. The Board of Selectmen always sees this stuff before it actually goes out to bid, or before you're making the award. So, um, you know, I always have to drive in a couple extra points while you, while it, so.
Well, and I, I, I think just stepping back, though, like, you know, I don't, like, this is a strategic decision, right, about the building? So whether it's three million or five million, I think we're gonna either decide to demolish it, or we're gonna try to save it, and there's gonna be a reason, a, a, a good proposal that was put forward that most likely is gonna cost less, but I think of like, saving it costs three, demolishing it costs five, it's more like, do we want the three million, you know, you know what I mean, do we want the save, do we want the proposal that is, uh, there? I think if we find a proposal that comes forward, that the town can rally around, that saves the building, we do it, right? Um, so, um, I don't think precision, you know, on the demolition cost is gonna drive what we do with the building, I guess, is my point. Uh, I don't know if I, I kind of along, roundabout way of saying that.
No, if you're twenty-five, the way I presented it originally is like, say we're, we're, our, our decision-making number, it's not even a budget number at this point, it's, it's a conceptual decision-making number, say it's four million dollars, and then we go into the next phase, and we pay Gilbane the, the thirteen-five to do a, a, an estimate, and it comes back at four-point-five. The four-point-five at four, while that's very important when we go out for funding, that's not really gonna change. If you were, if you were conceptually gonna demo the building, instead of saving it at four, the fact that it comes in at four-point-five or three-point-five is not gonna change your mind. If it was one or seven, yeah, of course, that, you, you need a greater degree of accuracy to, to make that decision.
Well, and I think, that, that's one of the reasons why I've been looking for, um, a more reliable number, is, um, we are just, you know, deep into a legacy of missteps of expectations with the public. Um, and, I mean, I personally, I, I don't think we can have any conversation about saving the building and, um, and other uses for the building, without having the demolition option on the table with the same level of precision. Um, I think that, um, presenting, um, just, um, bids, RFPs from, from people who want the building for some reason, in the absence of the demolition option is, is a disservice to the public, I think, I think it needs to be there, and, um, you know, to that end, the, the number that we put around demolition, um, has to be reliable. It, it, it can't be, um, it, it, it can't be, I don't wanna, I, uh, I don't use swag in a, in a, a pejorative term, but I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about, is, is, is a swag number, um, based on, on everything that, that you know. Um, and, and I, and appreciate.
So let's spend, let's spend the thirteen thousand dollars and get, that's the best, that's the proper course of action we've always followed. It's, didn't, you know, there's a million reasons about what happened with Academy, because when the budget was developed, then the crazy blow up of the construction market, you know, but, the proper way that we normally go about this is we'll get a professional estimate and proceed with that, just like we're doing for Ryerson, that's what the building committee's doing, right? They're gonna come back to us with a professional estimate for Ryerson, so why wouldn't we approach that the same way with Academy right now? That's the normal course, right, if we're willing to spend the money for that level of precision. So I would, you, that's the best, that's the only thing we can do without actually bidding out demolition, right? So, I think we just decide to spend the money, and then we'll be comparable to what we're getting for Ryerson, so we now have apples to apples, we have similar numbers, and we make our decisions based on that, right? That's, that's the only choice, right now.
Right, I, I, I mean, I, I think that's what I felt we were doing in our conversations immediately after the, um, referendum, and I, I do think it is the right way to go, and then, and then that information gets incorporated into all of the market data that we're collecting through the RFP.
Yeah, I was under the impression, Bruce, that we were doing what Ben had articulated, which was extrapolating from the Ryerson estimate, so that we didn't have to spend more consulting money. I thought that's what we had talked about multiple times.
That was, well, so I actually went back to the meetings, um, and, and re-watched the discussions, and it was, um, actively getting a, a, um, an estimate. It wasn't, it wasn't just extrapolating, it was, I mean, definitively getting an, um, an estimate. We might have talked about using the same company, um, to do it, but we weren't, we, we weren't gonna rely on Ryerson.
Well, I think we were talking about what the options were, but the, the, the thought was, right, we're gonna get these numbers back, and let's see where we land there first, before we make the decision. We're gonna get those numbers to, to this twenty-second, but I'm happy to, you know, I guess the question is, where does that funds come from? I would think we could use the Academy funds for that, um, that we have already, the existing bonding money, it's appropriate, because it's, it's, it's trying to look at options for the building still. Um, I don't think we need to vote for that, so I think, why don't we just plan on, if everybody's good, we'll proceed, and we'll hire Gilbane, and just get this, uh, get the, get the number, we'll get it in thirty days, right? So we'll have it right at the same time that the, uh, expressions of interest are coming back.
Uh, the only thing I would do is, is, is put out to, the, the query to Stacy and say, you know, is, what's more efficient to use planning money, or, you know, that's, that we've already got in the operating budget, or to use, um, borrowed money? Um, but, but either way, um, I think we should do it.
Oh, we can, we, we can use contingency right now, and then we can pay ourselves back on the bonding money. It's just, we're, we're, we're working through that contingency with a couple of different things, so, I'll work with her on the funding source, and I'll let the board know what her, you know, she can tell you where she thinks it's best right now, because I'd like to get it moving, otherwise, we're gonna have to wait till the next meeting, and then have a vote, and then, if it comes from planning, that is gonna board finance, right, which, I think is a whole nother conversation we should have at one point about.
I thought, I thought you had discretion under, under, um, a certain amount.
Nothing, anything coming out of Planning Reserve, I, we have to, that's why we voted on the fourteen-five that we just did for the, uh, WPCA, because that was Planning Reserve money, so.
We definitely gave you discretion up to a, a relatively high amount on, on money that you didn't have to seek, even, even our approval. I think we, we asked that you inform us, but, but we didn't.
It depends on, yeah, but the source, right, that might be contingency or something like that, but this Planning Reserve, and we're talking about that account, has specific guidelines for it, so.
Okay.
Oh, oh, we'll follow up, I'll, I'll look into it. I think it sounds like, just to make everybody feel comfortable, that we're gonna have a really tight number, um, we will proceed with Gilbane, and we'll figure out how to fund it then, okay? And then that way, we'll then all come in the same time as we're getting the, uh, um, and then the next meeting, um, the Neck River School is coming to talk about where they are in the budget, they're also gonna have the Ryerson numbers, you know, and we'll get a full update from them about how things are shaking there, uh, which is very good, so, um. Alright, so with that, then, uh, thank you, Ben, and, you know, we'll, we'll chat offline and figure out how to get that moving, and get the funding in place for, for the estimate.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Great, yep, uh, and, um, I guess then, uh, open it up to, we do have an executive session, so we'll do, uh, citizen comments, um, are there any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, alright, well, with that, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session, and, uh, to invite into that executive session, um, uh, Stacy Nobitz, uh, Deb Ferrante, and Jeannie Stevens.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, alright, great, thank you, and then the meet, meeting will be closed out at the end of the executive session, there'll be no further business or discussions for the public. Great, and Jeannie will lock the webinar in a few minutes. He can be out of executive session? Um, with that, um, I guess then, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
All in favor, say, say aye, alright, thank you, everybody, good conversation.
Have a good one.